I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zeasimple of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. I know that New Mexico pledge is kinda new for some of us, right? Let's start with a roll call, please Joan.
Chris Mortensen.
Here.
Charles Long.
Here.
Michael Shaw.
Here.
Priscilla Benali.
Goseda.
Kevin Mitchell.
Alright, we have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and proceed. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion, please?
To approve the agenda.
Okay, second down there by Charles. Go ahead, roll call, please.
Ms. Benali.
Oh.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen.
Yes. Alright, we're gonna jump right into our agenda here, and it starts out with recognition, and for that, I'm gonna turn the time over to Mr. Hyatt and his staff. Looks like we've got everybody here today.
President Mortensen, members of the board, this exciting day for us as directed by our school board, the school district several years ago, many years ago, started working towards making our students more career-ready, college and career-ready, and civic-ready for their futures once they leave high school. And this doesn't just happen at the high school level, we are doing things at the mid-school level and also the elementary level as far as career awareness, career preparation, helping students build job skills, employability skills, and a host of other things, internships in lots of different areas to ensure students have more opportunities and are better prepared for their future career. As a part of that work, we decided that we wanted to do a better job at helping students showcase their skills at a local, state, and national level. And so we have, as you can tell by the size of the room, over the years, we have recognized those who have competed in these various different events with respect to our career pathway work. As you can see on the agenda, there's a long list of competitions that we send students to. Some of those are far away, they're not necessarily local, I think back east we've sent students, all over the country to represent Gallup McKinley County Schools, and they've always done a fantastic job, and we're excited to showcase them. I mentioned this many times, sometimes some people think the school district or schools are just about sports, and it has its place, but we find this work the most valuable in preparing our students for their futures, and this is one of the ways in which we do that, and so we're excited to recognize our students today. We appreciate families, friends, and relatives who are also here to celebrate with us, our students. We'll do a lot of pictures also and be able to celebrate and get some things going viral online tonight, or even today, on social media, and this is pretty exciting for us. And so, I don't know what the numbers are, I'm not sure if Mr. McFarland has those numbers in comparison, I didn't ask him to do that, but I would say that we're more than double this year than we were last year, is that safe to say? Okay, and so this effort to showcase our students and them competing across the nation is ever-increasing for Gallup McKinley County Schools. So with that, I'm going to turn the time over to Jack McFarland, he's our director for college career and civic readiness at that department, and his team does a great job at organizing all this. It's not just about having students go and represent us, there's a lot of things that happen in the background, a lot of things that happen academically, a lot of things that happen with principals and staff and teachers, we appreciate you also, there's a lot of work that it takes to get students to these locations, multiple events, and then help them be prepared to show their skills, and so, Mr. McFarland. Oh, sorry, it's Kindy Keeler, she's the coordinator in college career and civic readiness.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Kindy Keeler, coordinator, and I'm here representing to kick us off of our college and career department, so good afternoon, thank you so much, President Mortensen, Superintendent Hyatt, board members and guests, E L T and parents, we do appreciate you, we're here to celebrate our students. Today, we recognize students that have excelled in our Career Technical Student Organizations, or CTSOs, including HOSA, BPA, Skills USA, TSA, as well as our other high-level competitions in STEM, environmental science, and film. Their achievements reflect our GMCS graduate profile skills, creativity and critical thinkers, responsible individuals, effective collaborators, and lifelong learners. So thank you to our advisors, schools, supports, and family to just celebrate our students today. So Arnell's gonna kick us off with HOSA.
The first CTSO we will recognize are our students and advisors from future health professionals, also known as HOSA. And starting with Crown Point High School Chapter. Levante Robinson, first place medical spelling, second place sports medicine, and third place behavioral health science, Levante is also a national qualifier. Rihanna Largo. First place dental terminology and first place medical terminology, Rihanna is also a national qualifier.
Just a little bit of logistics, we have all the students stay up, and we have different rounds of students coming in, so we'll take a picture at the end, I just wanna make sure that you guys stay up here after you shake the board's hands.
Next, we have Andrew Nesswood, second place CPR first aid team event and a national qualifier. Keisha Delguerito, second place CPR first aid team event, also a national qualifier. Saraya Garcia, third place medical spelling. Jimmy Etzidi, third place patient care technician. Skylar Charlie, third place occupational therapy. Let's call on our HOSA students from McKinley Academy. Starting with Lamise Sarami, first place nutrition. Lamise is a national qualifier. Isabella Pimentel, fourth place medical spelling, and will also compete at the national conference. Lakshan Sandaram, fourth place creative problem solving. Alexa Tandoy, fourth place creative problem solving. And last but not the least, Supia Garcia, fifth place plebotomy. Let's also acknowledge the incredible support and mentorship provided by our HOSA advisors, Ms. Sheila Ganson and Ms. Maria Ribera. Again, please join me in congratulating all our HOSA competitors and advisors for their outstanding performance and for representing GMCS with excellence and professionalism in the field of health sciences.
Thank you. Okay, students, if you have finished your awards, you may head back to the tech lab unless you have another award you're receiving. So this group may go ahead and head back into the tech lab unless you're receiving another award in our next round. Thank you. Next up, we will be recognizing Business Professionals of America, BPA. So we just recognized our Future Health Professionals, which was HOSA. They are a part of a school of health in our schools, or McKinley Academy, taking health-based programs in our schools. So we just recognized our health programs, so let's give them a round of applause one more time. Next, we are gonna recognize BPA, or Business Professionals of America. In two of our schools, we have School of Business, they take those round of entrepreneurial classes, and then we also will be recognizing Crown Point, who has a chapter in their school as well. So, up first, we'll have Reima High School, Deandre Chalendewa. First place fundamental word processing. Up next, Darren Garcia, fourth place fundamental accounting. Autumn Kuchay, second place advanced spreadsheet applications, third place fundamental word processing. Orin Grassi, second place entrepreneurship finalist presentation team. Maya Zavla West, finalist prepared speech. She wasn't unable to join us today, but she'll get her award, thank you. Tayla Appelous, finalist health administration concepts. Deacon Claussen, finalist presentation. Great job, Reima. We'd like to recognize up next, Tohachi High School, we have Catherine Denneclaw, first place fundamental accounting, fourth place intermediate word processing. Carrie Chato, fifth place banking and finance. Madeline Pesquale, third place intermediate word processing, third place basic office systems and procedures. Lauren Carviso, second place financial math and analysis concepts, second place digital communications design concepts, third place digital marketing concepts, fourth, fifth place across five or more categories including intermediate word processing, IT concepts, and health administration, eight awards. Congratulations. Ladainian Johnson, first place advanced word processing, placed in administrative support, health admin procedures, and health admin concepts. Bailey Chato, fourth place fundamental spreadsheet applications. Bobby Yasi, first place management, marketing, and human resource concepts, fifth place digital communications design concepts. Kalila Mitchell, fifth place meeting and event planning concepts. Logan Benali, finalist expatrianeous speech. Madison Livingston, finalists in three categories including digital marketing and meeting event planning. Great job, Tohachi, from Crown Point High School, we have more. We recognize the following production team category finalists. We have a team of Alice Balone, Markel Morgan, Shaquela Loretto, and Rope Spencer. That was a team, video production team, congratulations. Now, we need to acknowledge the incredible support and mentorship provided by our BPA advisors, Ms. Shauna Grassi, Ms. Anna Tapell, and Mr. Wade Morgan. So please join me in giving a round of applause to our BPA competitors and their amazing advisors for excellence, professionalism, creative problem solving in the world of business and technology. Great job.
Congratulations again, our Business Professionals of America students and advisors. Next, at this point, we would like to recognize our Skills USA. Skills USA is actually one of the biggest career technical student organizations, and they competitive events span in different programs of study such as welding, carpentry, automotive technology, welding, engineering, business, and even health. And to start us off, we would like to call our students from Gallup High School Chapter. Beginning with Anne Marie Roenhors, bronze culinary arts. Ray Sierra James, gold culinary arts. Ray Sierra is a national qualifier and will compete at the national level this summer. Josh Lilly, bronze welding. Keanu Bigay, bronze welding sculpture. Kyra Kido, bronze cabinet making. From Tohachi High School, Larria Pablo, bronze chapter display. Together with Nebay Thompson, bronze chapter display. Ricky Long, bronze carpentry. And let's also acknowledge the incredible support and mentorship provided by our Skills USA advisors from Gallup High School, Mr. Dexter Dell, Mr. Jep Taylor, Mr. Dean Cypress, and our advisors from Tohachi High School, Ms., Mr. Elmer Inbento, and Ms. Kelly Sarai. Let's all congratulate our Skills USA medalists and our dedicated advisors. They're really building the future of our students. Next is our youngest CTSO in the district. This is Technology Student Association, also known as TSA. And we will begin with our McKinley Academy Chapter, starting with... So, CTSO, Career Technical Student Organizations. These are various organizations spanning from BPA, Business Professionals of America, the first one that we recognized, one of the first one we recognized today, HOSA, Future Health Professionals of America, Skills USA. TSA again is Technology Student Association, there's a lot more. And this year, we now have four CTSO, Career Technical Student Organization in our district, and our CTSO, our Career Technical Student Organizations, are actually providing that opportunity for career exploration, career awareness, and actually networking for who knows, future employers for our students. So, continuing again with Technology Student Association, from McKinley Academy, the first one, is Mia Bagamaspad, first place chapter team. Together with Harmony Bigay, first place chapter team, and first place digital video production. Taylor Billiman, first place chapter team. Justin Chi, first place chapter team. Jadrian Dodson, first place chapter team. Merls Angelia Clement, first place chapter team, and second place board game design. Cooper Boyd, second place board game design. Lakshan Sandaram, second place board game design. Sebastian Valentino, second place board game design. Katie Ness, first place digital video production. And Memphis Smith, first place digital video production. We also have winners from Tohachi Middle School. Starting with Serenity Henio, first place technical design. Tenaya Lantana, first place technical design. Lace Brewer, second place technical design. Bailey Ness, second place technical design. Third place technical design, starting with Charlie Herbert. And Micah Yasi. Second place technology bowl, Elena Vicenti. And Serapim Ness. Also second place in technology bowl, Devani Peterson. Let's also acknowledge the incredible support and mentorship provided by our TSA advisors, Dr. Alan Dino and Mr. Eldred Ness. Folks, these young innovators are the future of STEM, and their achievements representing both technical skill and the power of collaboration. Let's give them a round of applause for both our TSA winners and our advisors. Thank you.
So if you're receiving another award coming up, please stay here. If you are done, you may head back to the tech lab, and don't forget to pick up your trash. Thank you all. Yep, we only have four more groups, but they're not as large, so we'll give them a moment. So as we're readjusting, we have a few more awards. We are continuing to proudly recognize students who competed and won in other major statewide STEM and creative competitions. These events represent a wide range of talent and innovation within GMCS, from engineering and environmental science to filmmaking and community-focused design. Up next, we're gonna recognize the New Mexico Governor's STEM Challenge. This challenge is where students worked with real industry partners to develop solutions to real-world problems. Sponsored by Los Alamos National Laboratory and corporate partners across the state. This competition highlights the power of STEM education in New Mexico schools. From our first school, McKinley Academy, under the mentorship of Mr. Alan Dino and Ms. Maria Rivera. The sponsorship of the National Radio Astronomy Observatory earned recognition for their project titled Ramp It Up with Navaramp. Let's recognize these students. First one up, Taylor Billiman. Cooper Boyd. Merls Clement. Julianne Foster. Lila Lee. Lager Slivers. Sway Sosi. And Lakshan Sundaram. From Tohachi High School, under the guidance of Ms. Nancy Riza Delacru- sorry, Delacruz. And Ms. Phoebe Poblere, sponsorship of Centec, were recognized by their project, Community Info Hub. A local online portable, portal, excuse me. And let's recognize our students. Mark Barney. Aiden Bitzili. Michaela Bitsoy. Bailey Chato. Harlan Henio. Urija Howe. And Destiny Jackson. Let's give our Governor's STEM Challenge students and advisors another big round of applause. I said the advisors. I read the advisors. Okay, yes, please. And who's your other, who's your other advisor? The advisors at the beginning. We didn't have them at the end. Okay, so we're doing the film right after this? Okay, okay. Yeah, the advisors at the beginning. And I said one of the names wrong. And again, if you are receiving another award, please stay in the room and line up over here. So coming up next is a amazing award that is New Mexico Film Prize Junior. This is the largest youth film competition in the state of New Mexico. There is a partnering one in the state of Louisiana, and it's really exciting that this, we've had multiple years in competing with Film Prize Junior. Today, we'd love to recognize Tohachi High School, second year in a row, under the direction of Ms. Kelly Sarai. Were selected as the Founder's Circle Award, a top recognition celebrating excellence in acting, music, editing, and design. This award recognizes from the, the actual judges as well as the mentors, because they could see that how hard the students were working. The, the film we will view as soon as we finish with the recognition is Bigfoot Medicine. Here's our students. Valerie Bahi. Zachary Mesko Largie. Iceland Variojo. Nivea Thompson. Jaden Jones. Haley Peschlikai. Kelly Sarai. So these recognitions show the talent and voice of our students in storytelling and production, skills that extend beyond the classroom. Are we going to watch their film?
In two.
Yes, just looks like we're on the right track. What do you think about it, John?
Just speak to me, Bernie. I think you're on the right track.
Yes, you're right. Okay, guys.
So we will be heading west.
So we will be heading west.
You turn me, what's up?
Yeah, John, what's up?
Oh, it looks like the radio came in.
That's strange. What should we do about it?
I don't know.
Hey guys, I think I found mushrooms.
Yeah, sure. Bigfoot's out there waiting for us.
That's, that's really Bigfoot.
No way, it's actually Bigfoot.
Is Bigfoot curing himself? What is happening right now?
It's quite normal when you don't have to reflex. Blessurian is a love that can heal and affection. Nature's very healing. Bigfoot's very aligned.
Protect, protect. Wow, Bigfoots can talk in my head. The philosophers are right. They can use all their brain, not just 20%. This could be huge, guys. We found Bigfoot in his world.
Well, not exactly what he thought should be, but this is it. This is a big discovery.
It's quite normal when you don't have to reflex. Blessurian is a love that can heal and affection. Nature's very healing. Bigfoot's very aligned. Protect, protect. Wow, Bigfoots can talk in my head. The philosophers are right. They can use all their brain, not just 20%. This could be huge, guys. We found Bigfoot in.
Thank you so much for sharing your, your Bigfoot medicine film. I think you could see the creativity, the hard work. It takes a lot to put a film production together. As you can see, that was one of the days we had snow, which were very rare this year. So let's give another big round of applause to Tohachi for their film. We had several other schools. Gallup High, Mia Miran, Tharu also have films, so you can go online to Film Prize Junior New Mexico and view all of our films through our schools. So congratulations to you all. All right. Up next, we have Samsung Solve for Tomorrow. Tohachi High School's achievement as a state finalist in the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow STEM Competition. A national contest that challenges students to use STEM to improve their communities. Led by Ms. Laney Gala, the student team developed a project called Sunflower Solar Tracker. Focusing on sustainable energy and environmental impact. Let's recognize this team. First up is Bailey Chato. Aiden Bitzili. Destiny Jackson. Bobby Yazi. Mark Barney. And Cole Howard. Ms. Laney Gala as a sponsor. Thank you. This project is a perfect example how science and creativity come together to build a better future. Congratulations, Tohachi. All right, and last but not least, we are going to recognize the New Mexico Envirothon. This is McKinley Academy, and these students competed in the New Mexico Envirothon. An environmental science competition focused on ecology, resource management, and sustainability. Under the mentorship of Mr. Alan Dino, the team received third place in aquatics and third place in special topics. Here are our students. William Harmon. Colin Jimmy. Celeste Perry. Elias Wan. And Carlos Mata. Mr. Dino, if you'll join us, congratulations. Let's give Ellie students, along with Mr. Dino. Whether through STEM, storytelling, sustainability, or service, these young leaders making their mark, and they're doing it with brilliance, creativity, and heart. Congratulations to the Envirothon. So one last big round, for a big round of applause for all of our students that we have recognized today. And all of our student organizations and all of their competitions. Congratulations. Thank you so much to the school board, our leadership for recognizing our students. Oh, so just so you know, out of all those students and groups, we have 32 that will be heading off to the national competition. Or HOSA is national, international, so 32 students. So thank you once again for having us today. Have a good day.
Do you remember how many we had last year? National, roughly? Ten, so it's tripled since last year. That's awesome. Great work.
Great job, guys. Great job. Spread the word. Let's get more people out in these clubs. It's, it's impressive to see young people achieve their goals. Any other items for recognition? Oh, go ahead, down there.
Mr. Mortensen, could I please request since the competition will be in the summertime, I think someone said June. If we could get an email or some kind of notice of how they, how our kids did this summer?
Hundred percent. Yeah, get them back. Let's see how they do nationally. That's exciting.
Yeah, that's all for the recognition, Mr. Mortensen.
Okay, we'll jump down to item number three, approval of the minutes from the March 31st, 2025 meeting.
Sir, I'd like to go ahead and motion to approve the minutes from March 31st.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yeah.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Abstain. All right, next item is approval of the consent agenda. Are there any questions, first of all, of any of these consent agenda items? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve items four A and B.
Motion to approve consent agenda items four A and four B.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mitchell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Next item is, is down in the study circle, number five. Is there any public comment today, Joan?
No.
Okay, no public comment. And so we'll jump right into our superintendent report and I'll turn the time back over to Mr. Hyatt for that.
President Mortensen, members of the board, um, we only have one item today. We're going to do the website overview during the next meeting. Or maybe not. Are we doing it or not doing it? Okay, let's, let's show it. I'll take that back. Uh, it's not uncommon for organizations to redo their website from time to time. And so we have recently and been working on currently making sure that we have an appropriate, professional, and useful website. And so we have changed vendors and so we have an updated version of our website for you. Obviously, you can go on your own phone or computer and look at this yourself and I encourage you to do so for those who are in our community. Uh, we just wanted to show a little bit to the, to the public through the board meeting about what that, uh, what new website looks like.
If the person over technology will stop breaking the technology, that would be great. President Mortensen, members of the board, superintendent, and members of the audience, I just wanted to show you from going into the website what this looks like. Um, why we chose to kind of move over to a new platform was just the capacity and ability of our previous platform was not expansive enough. Um, and we weren't able to change things in real time, which caused a lot of problems for us. As you can see here, we actually have a pop-up. So any parent or individual who's going to come here is going to see that the twenty-five, twenty-six online registration is now open. Um, and you can see from the new website, we're actually able to do videos now on the main page. These do not have sound, but this is one piece, this is one capacity that our previous website did not have. We couldn't have a lot of videos unless we linked to an, an additional platform. Um, so it gives the, the system itself a lot more, um, capability. Also, you can see events. You can see all events by clicking there and this is district-wide. Um, the news, we put that down there. This is news that is happening. So these are kind of larger stories. And then our live feed that actually posts to our social media, to Facebook. Um, and as you can see, we've already posted twenty-five minutes ago, the pictures that were being taken today. And those will continue to be updated. So it's very instantaneous how we can get the information out. You'll see the various headlines that are down there. There is some demographic information. Um, our programs that are highlighted. And we actually do have an app. So if you want to download Gallup McKinley County Schools to your phone and turn on notifications, you will get notifications for certain things. This also has allowed us to embed a parent notification system, which doesn't hold us to the standard hundred and forty characters. So if you've been around Gallup McKinley County Schools for a while, you may have gotten a message that says one of two, two of two, in order for us to get messages out. We now have a greater capacity of putting characters out, so you don't have to get multiple messages. Um, I do also want to highlight that the schools themselves are actually very branded. So say Theru High School, there's our notification again. You can see it's branded with its school's colors. Um, the schools are able to redesign this kind of slideshow that's going across the top. It is school-centric to the school itself. Um, and you can see down here that they actually have their own events that are on that. So they have a junior parent meeting on the twenty-third, on sixteenth, it's seniors' last day. On May the tenth, they have prom. And so each individual school can actually go in and make their specific news for their parents. You can also see that they have put out news that is specific to their school. Um, and so each one of the schools has this capacity. Um, we've also kind of updated, for example, um, one of the things that I think is very unique um, is the actual ability of translating the website. And what I think is really interesting about this feature is I wish we had Navajo as an option. We know that unfortunately, a lot of the platforms that put forward these things do not have that capacity yet. But I'm hoping someday that they do, especially as that revitalization of the language continues. But right now, we do have the, uh, English, Arabic, Spanish, and Tagalog is available. Um, and so if I click on this, it will translate the webpage into Tagalog. So that someone who is needing that support can actually see the webpage in that language instantaneously. And you can see that it's changed all the messages. It's changed the news stories. Um, I think it's a very interesting, um, capacity of this website. Um, it also allows, if you would like to contact someone in the district, for them to be able to email staff without having our email addresses. Why this is important is so that we don't have lots of people mass-fledding email boxes um, with potentially dangerous links and things of that nature. The message does go directly to the, to the end user's email box, but it comes from the website itself. And so it keeps our email addresses secure. Um, I also really like that we have been able to build our own webpages. So here, if you're looking at a career at Gallup McKinley County Schools, you can actually view our current advertisement for, um, hiring. It has a QR code to go directly to our hiring. And it also details all the competitive type, um, items that we have for working with Gallup McKinley County Schools. And I'm hoping that you can see with just the changes that are on here, how much more modern and efficient the website actually is. Um, our previous provider, really, we had issues with them that we were never able to get fixed, whether it be lists of staff or other things. With this one, we can do things pretty much instantaneously. Um, as I mentioned, the staff was able to go back and make a post immediately about today's board meeting and there's already an image in here. There you guys all are from today's meeting. Um, with that, I do have Kathy Polich. Um, she is our public relations officer and she is actually in charge of the management of the website. So if you have any questions for her or I, I would be happy to, I would be happy to talk through that with you.
Sorry, Devana. Um, can you go down to the board? Because the, I had a parent that... Is there like a link going right to our board meetings or?
Yep, so right here about GMCS. And there you are, board meeting agendas, board meeting, um, schedules. You can watch it live. The link is always posted. I don't know if I'm going to do an inception thing here in a moment as I have it up on my computer.
There it is.
There we are.
Wow.
And you'll notice there is a slight delay, but yes, there it is.
That's cool.
I'm going to turn it off before I really start the echo in here. Um, but yes, you can actually see the board mini dates right there. Um, they're all up to date. Anytime there's a change, Joan is great. She updates that on the website. Um, and our technology staff always has the live link available.
Thank you, um, W. Superintendent Hanks and PR team, Kathy and Vanessa and whoever else was involved. Uh, we appreciate you continually making us look better and make sure that you're showcasing the things that we have in the school district in a fashion that everybody can view quickly. And so we, we've struggled over the years of getting the good information and good things that our students are doing out quicker. And over the last several years, we've done a better job and it's getting better and better. Now the website kind of reflects that work also. And so thank you very much.
Can I ask a couple of questions, Mr. Hyatt, Ms. Hanks? Um, okay, so the first one I have is, is, uh, and, and you don't have to like show me where it's at or on here or whatever. I'm just asking if there's a link, um, to athletic games, athletics? Like what I mean is, is, uh, as my kids play sports in different places and different schools, like sometimes it's a challenge to find where their games are, where I can watch them online, like when, if, if we don't go and stuff. And so I was just curious if there's a thing on here that shows where, where people can stream that stuff?
Yeah, so Athletics does have its own page. Um, and so it does have the information about the inter fees. Here is the home games to get your subscription to watch those. Um, and it also includes athletic forums and information. Now, the purchasing of tickets, we do know that we do not charge funding for our events. However, when the NMAA holds district games here, that is a different story. And so one of the things that we haven't fully launched with this website that is capable is actually online payments for multiple things. And so one of the things that we're actually looking into is could we use the safer prom tickets? So that people are not having to go to the school and pay, they'll just be able to do it online. Or if they want to shop at one of our stores for our merchandise that our students are selling, they could go to the store. And so that's one of the things that we're looking to expand on the website.
Cool. How about a link on there for, um, uh, social media? Like things where people can, like maybe, uh, get, get pointed towards wherever we're at on social media?
So that is the one thing that we were looking at the other day, actually. Um, most people do not know that Peach Jar is one of the places where we put the majority of our information, so flyers. It's actually called Peach Jar.
I don't even know what that is.
I know. Yeah, we, we were talking about-
Presented it to you three years ago.
Brand recognition. And so this is actually where all of our community events and flyers are, are on the website. Um, you just click that little peach and all the events and those things come up. So that's one area. Um, the live feed is another area. And I don't know why Kathy, but I am not seeing the direct link to the social media sites because they were at the bottom. But now that I'm presenting, they're not there.
We'll, we'll double check that, but yeah, usually we have a Facebook link.
My last-
All of this, though, this live feed is getting posted to social media. So when you click the view all posts, if you are not a social media person, this is pieces of what's being shared on social media. And there will be a full graduation page that will actually have all of the photos from graduation this year. So there will be a link on the website for graduation.
My last question is, um, as we're, you know, training, teaching our students and we have coursework for all kinds of these things, is there, is there a place in here where the students are able to help, uh, design this kind of stuff?
President Mortensen, I like that idea. We've been discussing interns back and forth and capacity for interns. We just have to be very careful about what rights we give to whom.
Right.
Because once it's online, it's on there forever and that's a good message for everybody. Once you put it online, it's on there forever.
Pro tip. Okay, okay. I just, that, uh, that sounds awesome. Thank you. All this stuff is excellent. Any questions, board members?
One question.
All right.
On this site, if there's like a game playing, like Mia Mir is playing Real Grand, will it list, uh, like a program with all the students' names and their numbers so that people? Because I've had some people comment that they go to the games here and there's no program.
Like a player roster or something like that?
Uh, Mr. Mortensen, um, Secretary Shaw, no, I don't believe, but Max Preps. Yeah, Max Preps is available and we can definitely link to Max Preps. That's definitely the main area where if you are watching athletics and sports, and Kate Donkin speak about that. But Max Preps, you can get all that rostering information on there and we can definitely add a link to the athletic websites to Max Preps.
Yeah, that's the place to find it. When you look for Max Preps, they'll have like the player rosters with their numbers and what grade they're in and, and everything like that. Any other questions down there?
Um, yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, a couple of questions, Devana. Um, kind of similar questions to my colleagues. Um, one of the things that we, we, I was looking at before, but they wasn't updated, was like the Athletic Handbook, our policies that we have in the district. Um, can you locate those for us and are they being updated? Because even now, we've had some legislative changes and, you know, what, which department is in charge of, um, those changes for us?
Sure. So the, so the public, um, so our public relations office will actually work with and we actually have an internal manual, um, that was recently implemented for reviewing and make sure things are updated. So we have specific expectations. I will caution that things that are starting with legislation that was recently signed will start July first. And so you will start to see some of those updates taking place, um, as the, as that, um, works forward.
I'd also add that any board policy would only change with board approval. So we will be looking at the legislative changes to see if anything needs to be updated in our own board, board policy, but that would come before you, before it gets put on the website.
Yeah, so here's the Athletic Handbook, the Behavior Handbook, and the Student Bus Handbook for the current year. Um, but if there are other areas, and by all means, if there's any feedback on the website or someone has a question, um, you can easily locate me and send me a Thrill Share message and let me know. Kathy is the same way. We are very open. Um, we do try to make sure everything is up to date, but nobody is perfect and so we welcome that feedback.
Uh, the other thing is, um, do we have it on here somewhere, or in an education act? And then also the IPP.
The IPPs is located within the documents. I was actually just looking at that earlier. Um, so down here in our public information, um, it does have, um, our policies, procedures, and forms. I was just looking at it a minute ago. That's what I get. Hold on one second. There's our tribal status report and we do have, um, our IPPs online. So there is our Impact Aid. I will find it because I was just looking at it, not a coup-, not more than a couple of minutes ago.
For the sake of time, we can-
Yes, absolutely.
We can send you the link to show. If for some reason we're mistaken-
I know. I'm so sorry.
I've seen it on there.
Looking forward a minute ago.
Thank you very much. And two more questions, please. Um, do we have a current map of the district? Because I know Mike's always, when during election time, we're always asking for the current, um, map and boundaries. Um, and I think that would be nice to keep it on our website. The second one is, I know we also have, um, a budget survey, um, that parents, is that a link or something? QR code that parents can get on to and also do that if it's not done, if it's not, if it's still open, I guess.
So twofold on the questions. We can definitely get a GIS link to our current boundaries. I know that exists in another area, but we can definitely put a prominent link on the webpage. Um, the other thing is the budget survey has closed, um, just because of the quick turnaround with the sixty-day session. So the budget survey has closed.
Okay, but at any time there is that kind of survey, we would put it somewhere in our informational?
Yes, and we did push that out through multiple areas. We actually text messaged home, um, to parents. We also put it on our social medias. We emailed to every single, um, staff member in the district. And I emailed it personally to every single chapter house official, um, the Navajo Nation, the Zuni Pueblo, all of our, all of our tribal partners. I emailed that link out. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right. I don't think we have any other questions, Mr. Hyatt.
All right, President Morten, President Mortensen, members of the board, um, we have one more item that we'd like to present on. Thank you, Ms. Hanks. Uh, I've got Afilia Sanchez, Director for our Cultural Ed Department. Uh, we wanted to do an update. We had talked to you last year about our new ability and our new curriculum and assessment that we can show data. And so we actually have some data that we'd like to show you and, and routinely we'll update you on that data. Um, and then also, there's been some questions about the bilingual seal and some of the changes in that area that will help our students more easily qualify. And so we'll share a little bit of information about that. So I'll turn the time over to Ms. Sanchez.
Hello, good afternoon, Board President, School Board members. Thank you for having Culture Ed here to update you today. So, um, we can go to the next slide. So in all we do, not just building the YAG and aligning to the Dine Content Standards, but it's building our assessments, our CBMs, and our work with our teachers to, uh, meet the skills of the different assessments that are given from the Navajo Nation. So everything we build in Mass Reconnect, it mimics DELPA, which is the Dine Proficiency Language Assessment that we get from the Navajo Nation. We have a beginning of the year and the end of the year. We have a beginning of the year and the end of the year, and that leads up to our bilingual seal in 12th grade. So, each of these tests with our Mastery Connect and the test from the Navajo Nation look at these four concrete skills. One, introductions. How well can students introduce themselves, their community, their clans, their family? What are they interested in? The second skill is repeating. So, if I say a phrase, a full phrase or words in Navajo, are they repeating with the correct pronunciation, grammar, dialect? And then the third part is visual vocabulary. So, we show them a bunch of pictures or they watch a video, and then they have questions that they answer about the pictures. So, building that comprehension with pictures. Then our last piece is that oral comprehension. Can they hold a simple conversation in Navajo and answer, listen to a passage, listen to what a person is saying, and then being able to answer questions based on what is saying, what is being said in Navajo? So, when we look at our Mastery Connect, everything we do is around having conversations and students having conversations with one another, with their teachers, and hopefully carrying that into their community and to their families. So, on our test, how it's set up, question one and two is all about introduction, learning who I am, learning my clans, learning where I'm from, learning where I go to school. Questions three, four, and five are that repeating. How well can you repeat after what the teacher is saying from simple words to phrases? And then questions six, seven, and eight is building that visual vocabulary. We give them pictures to look at, and then we ask them questions in Navajo, you know, like, "Dishat eh?", you know, what is this? What's this a picture of or who this is? And then our last questions are nine, 10, and 11, that rate that oral comprehension. So, in what we've been doing, so if you look at where we're at, it's really been a good, solid three years. First year, building our YAG, building our standards, building the curriculum. Second year, introducing Mastery Connect and three-week CBMs. So, really, this is, I mean, the second year, and then this is our third year where we're running now with the full curriculum. We have completed Navajo II and Navajo Government. So, every course structure in HLC has a test and has three-week CBMs. So, last year, we only completed Navajo II, but we've moved to, I mean, Navajo I, but we moved to Navajo II and Government, and those have been completed this year. So, if you look at the first page, and I gave you a larger printout in front of you, the teachers have, the teachers and the principals have access to this data. It's instant as soon as the students take the test and submit. Anyone can see this data. So, the data I'm showing up here on the board today is looking at the standards. We just pulled first grade, and these eight standards that are in Unit 9, you can see how well the students are meeting these standards. Green, obvious means they're meeting the standards. Yellow is they're nearing. Red, of course, they need support. And then, teachers can also break this down, not just by standard, but by the question. And the question is linked to each standard. And you can see the green graph and the red graph. That number you see up, it says 162 on your paper, and then it says 94. If the teacher is able to click on 162, then it gives them a list of all the students who have met that standard. And when they click on the red, it gives them also that list of students that did not. So, in looking at their data and using their data to drive instructions, they can look by the standards, they can look by the questions, and they can get a little deeper and look exactly at which kids are meeting these standards or not meeting the standards. So, one thing that we really hone in is looking at, one, by grade level. We're showing you here first grade. The next slide shows fourth grade, and where they're at in meeting the standards and to the questions. So, if you look at question one and two, we have a lot of students developing how to introduce themselves, whether they're saying their name, whether they're saying their clan, whether they're saying what community they come from. It is all divided into the quarters and what standards we're targeting. And if you look at three, four, and five, that's where the students are repeating. And you look at six, seven, and eight, and that's where students are answering questions with a picture. And you can see the trend there is that we have larger green and very little red. But when we get to questions nine, 10, and 11, where they're supposed to actual hold and have a conversation, we're still developing those skills. So, many of our students now can either answer in a simple Navajo word or a simple phrase, but holding a conversation and continuously questioning without the strategies of repeating or the vocabulary, we see that the students are still developing in that area. So, if you look down at questions nine, 10, and 11, you see there's a zero, there's a one, there's a two, and there's a three. So, with these questions, not only are we seeing if they can hold a conversation, but how well are they understanding what the teacher is saying to them? So, a zero means we absolutely did not get a response. A one means that they actually answered in English. A two is a simple word in Navajo, and a three is that they answered in a complete phrase. So, we can see that where we see the numbers in yellow at a one, students are actually understanding more and more what their teachers are saying in Navajo. So, they're just, haven't got that part to really respond in Navajo. And so then, so if you look at that progression from first grade to fourth grade, sixth grade to eighth grade, it's consistent with our elementary and our mid-school. We are developing the understanding, they're comprehending what their students, I mean, their teachers are saying in Navajo. They're able to answer in a simple response or one word in Navajo or a simple phrase, but holding a complete conversation is where we're trying to build, continue to build their skills and work with the teachers on how to extend what they're saying in Navajo. So, if you move that sixth grade on the board there, you can move to eighth grade. And then there's eighth grade, and you can see the same trends there with each page. And then when we get to Navajo I in high school, you can see that nine, 10, and 11 have a lot more green and a lot more number twos where they are answering Navajo. So, looking at that scaffolding and looking at building to where, when we get to high school, we're hoping that they can hold and have this conversation to meet the skills of their DELPA and also to the bilingual seal. That's our overall goal, is to get more students to qualify for our bilingual seal. More than ever, we can say that the trend of language loss is here. We have a lot more students coming in not speaking the language, not understanding the language. I would say maybe one in 10 students maybe can understand the language, but we know that there is a deeper gap of not speaking the language at all. We're happy to say that our partnership with the Navajo Nation continues to grow. We've now become a site where they test for the bilingual seal. We've had several of our teachers and also our cultural ed staff that are certified to give the bilingual seal and to help so that way the kids in our area or from any other district, they're welcome to come here and take the test. We're still working on the proposal to see if we can have the tests given also to junior year and the senior year so kids have more exposure, have time to build, because we do have a lot of students that are very close in achieving a bilingual seal, and they're only missing it by a few points. And so, but that's where we're at in our assessments. And then you can look at Navajo II, where you can also see that trend there in high school. There is a lot more kids that are now speaking Navajo and being able to hold a conversation and answer in Navajo, a more complete phrase and a complete answer. And so, we are continuously building the program. We have purchased a lot of our own items so where we can make our own resources in building the assessment for Navajo Government and Navajo II. We built our own mini history books on the chapter houses, a history book on the presidents and the leaderships from the past presidents all the way back to 1986 to today. We've also made our own posters, our own timelines. We continue to build flashcards for our K II. We are in the works of finalizing a standards-based activity book that is written in English and Navajo that's going to help support the instruction in class. We are updating the year at a glance and moving some standards around and where it will still spiral back in, but continue to build the same themes. And then, we are looking at establishing our own summative assessment for the beginning of the year and the end of the year. So, we're measuring more exactly what are kids actually saying in Navajo, and do we see growth with actual words, which we will also mimic in our Mastery Connect because now we're going to look at exactly what kids are saying and what, how are they're answering? You have any questions, comments?
I always have questions.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
What other languages do we do bilingual seals for? I know I've seen Spanish and-
Just Spanish and Navajo.
Just Spanish and Navajo. When you compare like a kid that graduates with a bilingual seal in Spanish compared to a kid that graduates with a bilingual seal in Navajo, how similar are their language skills in that language?
So, they're, they're very, it's a very different process because when they take the Spanish test, they take it, they have to be able to write and speak, and where our test is based just on oral, an oral assessment. And the Spanish test is more produced by the NMPD and the Spanish program where ours is generated from the Navajo Nation, and they choose what to ask and how to ask on the bilingual seal.
And excuse me if I'm like ignorant about the, you know, the Navajo language in general, but are you working towards having like a, you know, like you said, a written and read and speaking type of an assessment like Spanish? Or is it always going to be a lesser? Or is it lesser? Maybe it's not even lesser. I'm just saying, is it always going to be a lesser assessment? Or what's the long-term plan with that?
That I wouldn't really have an answer to today because really, right now, focus, I think across the board in Navajo Nation is really focused on oral, an oral assessment and not really getting into the written form. I mean, the written language is still very brand-new, and so then, and then teaching the forms of a written language is very different than on how we're speaking the language.
So, it sounds like it's more difficult to get a Spanish language seal than it is to get a Navajo language seal?
They're both pretty complex because even though ours is oral, the questions are very rigorous, and the, when they give the assessment, it's both very hard.
They can also take the Spanish assessment multiple times.
Yes.
Whereas for Navajo, you can only take it as a senior.
And just one time. And even if our kids are close, they don't come back to reassess our-
Even at the early ages in elementary, the state allows us to use their assessment even before they even go to high school, where again, the bilingual seal, the assessment for Navajo is only one time, senior level. So, we've asked the Navajo Nation to consider giving more opportunities for our students to take that test so they can become more comfortable with it. But internally, we're doing that work where we're building assessments, which you're seeing here in your document, that address that kind of holistic approach to helping students understand, read, and speak the language and so.
It sounds like there's like an element of like civics and things like that in a lot of these Navajo classes. Is there similar emphasis on civics in the Spanish classes?
No.
No.
No. Okay.
Because there's not necessarily a, there's a government for the, for Navajo people, Dene people, so there's some relevance there, whereas there's not really a, unless you go to Mexico or Spain or somewhere like that, where there's a government that's built around, not necessarily Spanish speakers, but people from that culture.
Does the civic side of the coursework, do you think it interferes at all with the language side of the coursework?
So, we have our own Navajo Government and History class-
Right.
And students still take regular US History and Civ. And so, where ours is more focused on our history and learning our history, we embed some Navajo in there, but because of the content and what they need to learn in the Navajo Government and History, it's primarily presented in English. But the terms and labeling and the themes and things where the teachers can integrate Navajo, they do that in Navajo Government. So, we do have an assessment for Navajo Government, but it's much different than our other assessments from kindergarten to Navajo II.
Interesting. Thank you. Board members, any questions down there?
Thank you, sir. Do I hear hecko? Need to hang ziggy doty. And I ain't luggy, but he ain't a nitsen. It's a, I can't understand. My first question is on, I really want to see, I don't know, what it is, a breakdown and outline on how the bilingual seal for Spanish is compared to Navajo. I want to, if you can email that to me.
Sure.
I really want to talk with Andy Nez, our council delegate, to see if there's any legislation or anything we can do to encourage our students, because it's just so frustrating. If our student is just right there, why can't they appeal to take it again? You know, and that just, I mean, in every other assessment or test, you know, we're always encouraging our students, you know, go back, study, try again, and, you know, this is very important for our children. So, I would like to let him see how it's different. And I'm very thankful because we had a conversation with Superintendent Hyatt about why we are not allowed to test our own students. So, to hear that our cultural staff is trained now to do our own bilingual seal testing is very encouraging. I know that, I mean, even attending one of your meetings here, they said, when you go over there, well, but, or they're not, it's not a, I mean, you go there and you feel very intimidated, and I think they'll feel better coming here or coming to people they've seen in our district and taking the test. I think the, I think they'll be a little more comfortable taking that, our bilingual seal in that form. One of the things that we kind of did, I was kind of frustrated with, and I extended my comments to our, you said there's a partnership between us and Navajo Nation, but I was very disappointed when I saw on social media about our student that got the bilingual seal, and they were all invited to go to, I think, Twin Arrows, and we didn't even know about it. That was so frustrating, and I reached out and, of course, I reached out to our superintendent, but I also reached out to Navajo Nation, and I said, "We need to be there to support our children, especially with something like this when it pertains to..." And I expect to see you guys there supporting our children because that's a huge honor. One student out of our district got that bilingual seal, and that we weren't there.
Yes.
And that's what I told Navajo Nation through Doty. I said, "You guys should have let us know. You should have told us. We could have been there." But, you know, to find out through social media like this was very disappointing. So, and the last thing is, I appreciate all the things that you guys are doing to continue to help us revitalize our language. We're starting to hear some wonderful comments, but I think through like the, like our Film Prize students or even our School of Media, you know, one of the things that I showed my kids this winter or a couple winters ago was the coyote stories, the old coyote stories where, you know, the figure, they, it's like, you know, they draw a figure and you flip a book and the character's kind of move.
Yes.
It would really be nice to see a modern, a modern film of the coyote stories like that. I mean, that would be something to give to our media individuals that are in charge of that, and because we're always trying to think of something in the cultural aspect because that, you know, that was one of my questions going to the schools during those presentations that we had. Okay, how are we incorporating this in our Navajo culture? Because, you know, we hear all this stuff of English, all the stuff that's happening in math, all the stuff that's happening in CTE, okay, but how are we incorporating that in our culture? And one of the things I also brought up at Gallup High was, why don't we have a Navajo Word of the Day? You know, you're doing the news every morning on the broadcast, why don't we have a Navajo Word of the Day? You know, just to start incorporating that into the School of Media or whatever it may be, you know, I mean, but we have to continue to be kind of- but we have to continue to be kind of creative in that. So those are my comments, sir, and I I really appreciate what we're doing. Oh, one more thing. We're we're saying this, right? We're saying we're trying to revitalize our language. We're trying to teach our children. They need to speak it. So where's our festival? I know we have the Science Fair and all that stuff, but their little skits that they used to do. That was something the kids really enjoyed to do because that is oral. They are singing. They are doing their skits. They are dancing, but we're not doing that anymore. I don't know if it's funding. We don't have the funding for it. I mean, just for them to give that presentation and that gym filled up with parents. So also, if you're looking at parental involvement, they those parents were there. I attended every single one of those things and I really appreciate the way our children would sing those beautiful songs. We even had one Filipino girl that sang or no, a couple. A couple Filipino girls that sang how to in Navajo or even did the Pledge of Allegiance or something in Navajo. So I I just really would like to encourage to bring that back because that was something also that was very um a way that we could support our children and revitalize in our language. So, Kaya.
Thank you. And those things are on the list and those are the things that we are reviewing and looking at and and also looking at how we can open up uh language class in the evenings to parents again. I know we've done that one year. But I think where we're at and where the teachers are at and in learning and not only their professional growth, but their application of how to teach a language um is something that we could do better now offering that to our parents. So that's something we're looking at and we're looking in how to put them in our plans and how to work out the details.
Even on our website, Travana, Navajo Word of the Day.
I think you're really gonna like that activity book.
Okay. Yeah.
President Mortensen, um I just have a question. I I did talk with Superintendent and brought it to his attention as well. You know, because I've been hearing from a couple of our um language and cultural teachers and almost school, end of the year, and they're still having problems trying to get their um weekly reports then to their principals and therefore being written up and, you know, or whatever else that goes along with that. But you know, what 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 training, I mean, I know that, well, I was told, you know, of course, there's training. But if they're having problems all the way to now, which is in the school year and they're still having those problems, not being able to be able to grasp how to exactly get that in, what 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 are we doing to help them?
So this year, uh while we started last year and we moved into here, but more, we have a more sol- solid process this year in in constructing um professional learning communities where we're teaching them how to be one reflective, one how to look at their instructional process. Um, because one of the ten, one of the questions is, well, what's gonna change in my um instructional pace to better meet the needs of the students or to the lesson plan? And so we've been doing a very um concrete training and going out and what we've done is right now, we establish cohorts. We have one in the Ruh, one in Navajo, one in Tohachi, one two here in Gallup um that Reima and David Skeach join in where we're actually um going through the um process of looking at an action plan. What is our data telling us? How to be reflective? And um also part of that is feedback. So we we have been providing the teachers with that. But it's still a process to learn how to really look at the data and what the data means. So we have not only given training, but we're doing specific um professional learning communities. And it really has enhanced our program from last year to this year because it's really our first time. Um, HLC teachers are talking to each other about content, about lessons and about instruction like, wow, you know, your your scores are higher than my scores. What did you do? And then looking at um what strategies are using it and how are you using it? And and last year, we were able to um take a group of teachers and we would do classroom observations in each other's classrooms. So we're doing a variation of that this year where we actually um recorded several lessons in everyone's classrooms and then we're coming back. And then we're looking at um the process of learning about feedback and how to um answer questions that are geared to the instructional pace and to what their data actually looks like. So it's not just training, but it's getting them in those um committees, having those conversations, teaching them how to be reflective and look at their feedback and look at their data. And then planning a goal of um we I've always as a leader, as a principal, as a teacher myself, what is something that I can quickly modify in my class tomorrow? And then what is something that give me time, two weeks to build it and then come back and check again? And so we do that process within our training and we have specifically um with Dual Language New Mexico, um they're our partner that helps us with that and then with the PSYOP strategies and then um our presenter that comes out and works with us, he also presents all the information in Navajo so that hopefully we can build the teacher's um comprehension and understanding of what we're trying to ask with those action plans and look at the data. It's still very brand new to them. So it's just a process that we are providing that support and continuing to bu- provide that training for them. It's been it's been very hard to move from an isolated um position in an island, so to speak, to now understanding that I have a team. I have other HLC teachers that I can lean on and depend on and that it's okay to share things and share ideas and um work with someone else within your lesson plan. So I think it's just that grasp of learning a new technique to the instructional process.
Um, I also want to say, you know, you um I did attend um one day of your training session and you know, I was very impressed and everything seemed to be going real well and, you know, I enjoyed seeing everything that went on and and what you guys put on.
Yes, thank you. With our language conference?
Yes, your language conference. So with that being said too, I know they had the New Mexico Association for Bilingual Education Conference in Albuquerque, which was this this also when this month that, you know, it's passed.
Did anybody attend that or any of our teachers um attend any other outside training?
Um, not with the Navi, but um Loreen, he went on behalf of Gallup McKinley County Schools.
So just the one here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mortensen, um I, one of the things that as a parent, um I was a grandparent. I mean, this is very encouraging when you see stuff like this. How how can we get this out to show that yet the the growth that is kind of happening in high school? Because that I that's encouraging to me to see this, that we're we're doing something, that something is working. And um and I don't know if that there's a little tab or something on the our website that for parents that are computer literate can look at this. But then I I would like to invite you um to my chapters that I represent to present this because I think they, I think that's the only way to get it out to our grandparents and our parents that are not computer literate. Um, because I I think this is valuable information that they need to know. The second thing is what um Mr. Mitchell brought up. Um, we have valuable information from our elders and I know we have some that are staffed as um language culture teachers. They don't have the knowledge that they that we all gain in college or anything. They have a different, the language part of it, the the culture part of it, and those are valuable and um I just appreciate the way you guys are, um as Mr. Hyatt has informed us that there are, there is training to help them in classroom management and trying to help them with their lesson plans. Um, because that that's not the kind of schooling they had. And I think having our our valuable um elders or are fluent fluent speakers. It's beautiful. I love, like this morning, I was watching the Navajo Nation Spring Council Session happening. Um, I wish my voice was like that. I wish I could do that. So I I'm hoping that um soon, you know, we would get to that point and let let our children learn. Um, you know, we're very fortunate to have Mr. Long here that you can hear him on the radio with some of our announcements in Navajo for our elders and our our parents because we need to continue to bring those messages in in Navajo to our children. So um thank you for encouraging those ones and, you know, we even had a program Foster Grandparents at one time. And those were very wonderful. You know, I don't yeah, I don't know if we have, if they're still around. But they used to be in our schools helping the teachers that were that didn't, that were non-native. You know, they were there to assist them and say it in Navajo to our children too. So, but thank you, Kaya.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. President Mortensen, that concludes the report.
All right. Thank you for the report. Um, ladies and gentlemen, I'll uh direct your attention down to the notices and communications that has some of the events that we have coming up. And it's that time of year again where we have our graduations. So I'd ask you to please mark your calendars and and uh come out and support our kids. It's the best time of year. Um, it's what we what we do here. So the next item is number six, new business. Um, and it is
I'm sorry, before you move on, um I just wanna ask Mr. Hyatt a question, please.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Mr. Hyatt, I brought to your attention um through text message, sorry, sir, but um about the social media stuff that's going around about prom, um and then also the Senior Ditch Day. Um, I just, I think it's good to bring it out on the open also what could happen to the kids um if they do participate in our student, what do they call it, prank? Or senior senior prank or what was it that, you know, and and it's that time of the year. Um, I just wanted to make those clarifications for maybe parents or students that may be listening.
Sure, President Mortensen, Ms. Benali, each year, um our principals do a great job at working with students at the high school level uh to help them look for positive things to do as they exit their senior year. Uh, creating legacy projects and those types of things where they can leave a positive impact on their underclassmen before they leave. And so that's one thing. Uh, we also uh appreciate hearing about and learning about some of those um activities that seniors may be involved in on Senior Ditch Day or things like that. And so we've also let principals know about those things so they can hear about them and if they if hear about, if they hear about them in their school, they're able to work with students to try to discourage those types of things. Uh, we don't want students getting in trouble, um not only with disciplinary type things in the school, but also with police and and some of some of those activities, those games that appear as games uh can turn into more serious types of things in the community um outside of school. Um, and so I know that uh the police departments have been very helpful with us. Um, and they they hear these types of concerns and complaints also about things that may be happening in the communities. And they've been very responsive and helping to try to deter those activities also. So uh we don't always necessarily proclaim it out to the to the public. Depends what it is. Uh, but in this partic- particular area, we've been working with the police department and others uh to try to discourage negative behavior or behavior that may seem positive or say may seem fun, but they could easily turn into something that has a higher consequence than what the students may have expected. So.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. Um, next item in in our new business is six A. Um, and it's an approval for adoption of the 2025 election resolution. I don't know if if any of you have have read through this yet or not. It's a a document that where where will this be advertised?
Uh, President Mortensen, members of the board, superintendent, members of the audience, this will actually go on the November ballot if it is approved by the board today. Um, to give a little background on this, every four years I come before you or someone in my position and ask you if we can go out and sell some more general obligation bonds. These general obligation bonds go to the rebuilding of our public schools to our state match that's necessary for that. Our last four year was $6 million and that was due to some significant decline in assessed valuation with a large amount of debt that was outstanding. That was the total amount that we were able to go out for. This 18.25 million um does represent our current ability, given that we were very um conservative with our last round of election. Our primary goal is not to increase the tax rate. We have taken into consideration what the newly um adopted legislation will do for veterans um and the new veteran exemptions for ta- property taxes. Um, so when we were looking, we've had a steady decline in assessed valuation and how that impacts the school district is we can only bond to 6% of our total assessed valuation. So we can only bond 6% of that, which is not very much in McKinley County. Um, and so the initial look at just 23 to 24, we were looking at a 9.4 million dollar assessed valuation drop. And then looking at the newly added veteran exemptions, it's an additional 13 million drop off of the assessed valuation. Um, even with that, this 18.25 million takes into consideration our ability to stay within the 6% as well as maintain a steady tax rate.
There's gotta be something that can be done about, I mean, that veteran exemption. I mean, I I think it's it's, you know, wha- whatever. I mean, if if people voted for it or whatever, you know, whether they like that legislation or not, I mean, that's not, that's not the point. But they can't like jam up the schools. That's like kind of an unattended consequences. Um, you know, to some of that legislation, it seems like. What about, what effect does inflation have on assessed values and things like that when, you know, property value is going up with inflation? Does that help us out at all?
So there is actually a clause that keeps um property values from rising substantially. Um, so even though you do see an increase in property valuation, there's actually in the state of New Mexico a component that makes sure that nothing rises too steeply too soon. So even if you do see a a large, um and unless a major investor opens something, you're not gonna see a significant increase in assessed valuation. There there is actually a a threshold that retains year over year. That increase is implemented over time. You don't see it in the next assessed valuation year.
Slow. Yeah, there's lots of funny little issues with that with that whole thing because I mean, as a property owner, you know, there's there's good and bad. Your property value goes up and that's sweet and until you have to pay your property taxes and that's not so sweet. So.
So I will comment on two things is that whenever tax incentives are given, um if say the county or the city was looking at tax incentives that would tape it, take assessed valuation off the tax rolls, they would need to notify the school district about that. The state does not have that same obligation. Should they choose to take property off of or reduce the tax rolls, the state does not have that same obligation to actually talk to the individuals who bond against that assessed valuation. Um, I will also say that I did I did hear the the county assessors, the leaders of the New Mexico County Assessors talk. They did advocate for this to be put more into a um state tax rebate instead of assessed property value just because many of the veterans that they're targeting um don't own homes.
True.
These are our very low-income veterans and of course, we all support our veterans and so there there would have potentially been a greater benefit for those individuals to see it through a state tax refund than through a decline in tax assessment. Um, and so I don't think that any of us disagree on that our veterans deserve um these benefits. I think it's a matter of looking at who is the primary beneficiary and if we're doing that equitably, the example they gave, you're a veteran, you have a million-dollar home, you're a veteran, you live in a mobile home. Well, the veteran in the mobile home who doesn't own it is not gonna get any benefit. But the gentleman or lady who has the million-dollar home will receive a tax reduction. And who really needs that benefit is likely the low-income individual. Um, so I think that this is gonna be an ongoing conversation potentially um as we go forward to to ensure. But for the circumstance right now, we know it will impact negatively our ability to bond and we are planning for that. So the proposal you have in front of you anticipates that.
Is there any mechanism that that we can, you know, ask the state for assistance with this or, I mean, I know that we we have impact aid, you know, that that helps us with the federal, you know, the federal part, you know, the federal land, but like this state stuff, when they have assessments that go down, I mean, it really, really, really jams us up.
Um, President Mortensen, members of the board, superintendent, a- as I mentioned, I don't know why there is not some sort of clause in there that they would have to go out to the stakeholders that would be impacted, just like cities and counties have to do whenever they try to offer a tax incentive.
Yeah.
Um, I I I wanna wholeheartedly say again, I'm not, I'm not blaming the beneficiaries. I think they're absolutely deserving of the reduction.
Yeah, that's not the argument. It just is.
It's just how we're choosing to go about these things and really thinking through the impact that's gonna happen.
We should have a bake sale on Election Day also and see if we can raise some money that way. Board members, are there any questions about? Board members, are there any questions about this resolution for election day? Anybody? Okay, well, then I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the adoption of the 2025 election resolution.
Second.
All right, second, roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Hanks, as well, thank you for your help with that. All right, the next item is executive session, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session and talk about the items that are written on the agenda.
So moved.
All right, the second down there, anybody?
One second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Two fifty-three.
All right, we'll go to executive session.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long? Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. All right.
Three forty.
Thank you, we're back in session, regular session. Just to report really quick on our executive session. Discuss the things, our discussions were limited to what's on the agenda and no decisions were made and no votes were taken. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.